Ladies and gentlemen, please go stand in for his worship, Councillor Norman Day.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please receive him. I will require you to inform him that this meeting is being recorded. This is in line with legislation. If any member of the public or press would like to record proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business activity. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items would use the microphone available. There are no fire drills planned, so if they allow both, and those sitting in the gallery, exit through the doors behind them. And those sitting in the chamber, exit through the main doors. I'd like to wish you all a very happy Christmas and a very, very, very new year. The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations have been received. Does anyone wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council on the 20th of November, 2019, for the acceptance of the two levels. The next business is where it's communication. I am pleased to invite members that the Chartered Institute of Public Relations has highlighted some kinds of council communications with residents as excellent practice. Our best start in life and fostering campaigns were each awarded silver status. Recognizing our success and providing good quality information at low cost, I congratulate all the teams involved in this achievement. Can the councillor Smith say a few words?
Thank you, Mr May. Sometimes our councils, in relation to the children services and their design and print web teams, has won two silver awards in the Chartered Institute of Public Relations North East Pride Awards. The winners be judged to be on a special award award by leading PR experts and to win the award is a weight achievement. The two awards are for the best starting campaign, silver for the public sector category. This award recognizes the successful use of public relations by public sector organizations as well as public relations consultants in within pub or in partnership with them. The best starting campaign was launched in May 2017 and brings together all services and support of children and families in the one campaign. Help them to build services, help people access them quickly and easily, and to support families to engage and support themselves. We also work for partners in their roles in safeguarding our children and encouraging them to be an ambassador for children and families. The second award was Could You Fill These Shoes Foster Care Campaign, silver for the low budget category. This award recognizes a successful public relations campaign with a budget of less than 15,000 pounds. Our fostering service has changed. In January 2018, we were introduced a new payment for skills, the PFX model, which underpins our commitment to achieving the best possible outcomes for our worked-up children, supported by skilled, motivated and rewarded foster carers. It provides entry requirements, expectations regarding care and training and skill development. And then from Schnepp, eh, Kedaw. So thank you, Mr May.
Thank you, Mr May. I am proud to announce that the Word has won Best Programme at a venue of 2018-2019 at the Living North Awards. I would like to invite councillor Texan to say a few words for Mr's leaders award. Councillor Texan?
Thank you, Mr May. Since opening in October 2016, The Word has welcomed over 1.2 million visitors and has quickly established itself as a leading cultural venue in the North East. The Word's offer is bringing together 21st century library, digital media centre in open zone with a natural cultural venue celebrating the written word in all its forms. It is an offer which is enjoyed by visitors from across the borough, the North East region and beyond, even attracting a group of librarians from New Zealand to South Tyneside to learn from what we are actually doing here. Satisfaction levels are high, with 91% of visitors being repeat visitors, and whilst The Word attracts every age group, almost half the people visit from children demonstrating the venue's roles and inspiring the next generation. We can rightly be proud of what The Word has achieved in this relatively short time. Monsters the Goat, the Bard and the Curly was one of the top regions exhibitions in 2018. Selfies with our very lifestyle, sui replicare for Monsters Inc, actually at Global. This was followed by When the Bugle Calls, a touring exhibition from the DLI Museum, and our current Amazing Space exhibition takes visitors on a journey through space like Northern. As a result of this success, we are delighted to receive the Best Programme for the Venue's Award at the Living North Awards. The judges commented on the imagination programs of the events, exhibitions and performances, and also the investment in the van, which has provided a meeting and event space with a superb quality location to bring top offers to South Tyneside. Therefore, Mr May, on behalf of the members, offices and partners in South Tyneside, who have worked so hard to establish The Word as a leading cultural venue, I'd like to present Mr May the award. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Texan. I am also pleased to inform members of South Tyneside Homes has won a gold award for employee recognition for their armed forces by the Ministry of Defence Employee Recognition Scheme. I would like to invite councillor Ed Morgan to say a few words on this award. Councillor Morgan?
Oh, thank you, Mr May. Mr May, members will know that it's been nine years since the first, since the first Tyneside Committee Covenant was signed in December 2011 alongside a range of local partners in the public-private third sectors. The Covenant is a statement of mutual support between the civilian and local armed forces communities. The Covenant represents our commitment to supporting the armed forces community in South Tyneside. The Covenant has been instrumental in providing support for the armed services community, but in particular, helping returning service personnel to integrate back into civilian life and helping them to be able to make a contribution to the local community using their skills and knowledge gained in the armed forces. South Tyneside Council was awarded the Gold Award in the Armed Forces Covenant Employee Recognition Scheme in 2018. South Tyneside Homes have also been involved as an employer in the Covenant. They have worked alongside the council on numerous projects with a clear focus on improving the health and wellbeing of the armed forces community. Two examples of projects undertaken by South Tyneside Homes are: establishing an armed forces accommodation scheme. This dedicated move on accommodation has been developed to provide veterans with support to enable them to progress into a more independent life and employment, educational or training. Veterans are also given housing priority status by South Tyneside Homes. South Tyneside Homes also employs a dedicated outreach worker, acting as a key worker for ex-service men, our ex-service personnel, reservists and their families with housing, healthcare and welfare services and advice, as well as helping to find employment. South Tyneside Homes has also provided employment and training to ex-service personnel. This work and dedication has also been recognized by the Ministry of Defence, who in November last year awarded South Tyneside Homes the Gold Award in the Covenant Employee Recognition Scheme. Mr May, I am extremely honoured and proud to ask Mr Paul Mears, the managing director of South Tyneside Homes, to present this award to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. I am finally, I am finally, I am delighted to advance that South Tyneside's approach to leisure services has been recognized on the National Platform for Local Government Partners. Over shepherded our forward-thinking approach for future places award, the LJC has recognized our investment in new technology and high-quality facilities to enable local people to get active and stay healthy right across South Tyneside. Well done, South Tyneside. The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director business and resource on the 2020-2021 council tax basis. I will ask councillor Ed Morgan to form the report. Councillor Morgan?
Oh, thank you, Mr May. This report considers the council tax base for 2020-21. The tax base determines the level of expected, expected annual income passed to the council in major preceptors such as the Police and Crime Commissioner and Fire Authority from a specified level of council tax calculator of a band day dwelling. The tax base figure for 2020-21 is calculated from current dwelling numbers in each council tax band, estimating number of exemptions, discounts and net additions to the housing stock over the coming year. The figure is also taken into account an estimate for non-collecting. The local council tax support scheme forms part of the determination of the council tax base. The scheme will remain unchanged from previous years apart from some minor amendments to wording. The council was by law set the tax base for the forthcoming financial year and informed pre-repting authorities of the calculated number of band day equivalent dwellings on Port 31 St January. Therefore, recommended that the tax base for 2020-21 be agreed as 38,958 as detailed in the report. I move the report, Mr Chair, Mr May.
Is that seconded? Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report?
Thank you, Mr May, and thank you to all those involved in the preparation of the report. Firstly, before I get into anything else, let me say how pleased I am to read that this council will continue to support the care leavers in South Tyneside. We should be incredibly proud that despite tightly squeezed budgets, we're doing our very best to give these young people the best possible chance for a positive start to their home life. On the flip side, it doesn't sit at all comfortably with me that the council continues to ask plans of council tax support to pay the highest amount possible, 30 per cent, when many other councils charge these people between zero and 10 per cent. Indeed, I gather that just over half the people in our category in South Tyneside behind their payments. Let me stress however that all of this needs to be seen in its proper context. Despite having the fifth largest economy in the world, the amount of money that the government allocates to local authorities has been cut and cut and cut, with South Tyneside being, I think, the third largest city in the entire country. Local government continues to face a funding crisis that's damaging our communities. Nationally, spending on children at risk of neglect or abuse has been slapped by 26% over the past five years. Spending on children centres has dropped by 42%. The number of older people who are not getting the care and support they need has hit a record high. One in seven now live in some level of unmet need. That's a 19% increase since 2015. In order to continue to provide services, councils are currently forced to meet the shortfall somehow and often have no option but to pass these costs onto residents. We need to continue fighting for a better deal from central government. Let's have no doubt over this, there is money in the country, but just isn't getting to the places where it's needed the most. We need to make sure that local services get support from the taxes that should be being collected for national and multinational corporations. Central government must be able to provide resources over and above those rates in Ocre so long as we have an unfair local taxation system. We need to keep fighting this fight for the people of South Tyneside.
Thank you, Mr May. Well, there's not a lot that I can actually disagree with that in the councillor's, the councillor's statement. I'm glad he accepts that, you know, local government, while it's been the most, the most efficient part of, of the, the public sector, actually continues to lose finances. You know, in the beginning of your, in the beginning of your short, short speech there, you said that, you know, that you are disappointed, that, you know, that we had to keep the 30% charge. You know, and you quite rightly have said that, you know, funding for council tax support was absorbed within the general government grant and has been consistently cut, leaving the shortfall around 6.5 million pounds per year in the council's finances. The 30% charge makes a partial contribution to the funding of that shortfall and affects around 10% of all council tax peers. Residents of principal age continue to be assessed under the terms of the old National Council Tax Benefit Scheme. And I'm glad the councillor has, has actually acknowledged that we, we, we agreed as a, as a, as a council in October to, to support care leavers in, in the border. So it's just one example of how, you know, we as a council, even though this Labour council, even though its finances are being restricted, still tries to care for people that we represent.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. This legislation requires a name vote is taken on certain decisions relating to setting a budget, including the calculation of the council tax base. We therefore ask the actual head of political services to consider the report.
Thank you, Mr May. Could members please indicate whether they are for or against agreeing the report by saying for or against and I'll agree their own. Ammar?
For.
Onion? Atkinson?
For.
Bell?
For.
Boyer?
For.
Brady?
Will?
For.
Carter?
Dean?
For.
Dick?
For.
Dixon?
For.
Dixon?
For.
Thompson?
For.
Duncan?
For.
Ellison?
For.
Eglent?
For.
Foreman?
For.
Francis?
For.
Gibson?
For.
Hamilton?
For.
Haye?
For.
Everton?
For.
Hopson?
For.
Keating?
Kerr?
Kebaugh?
For.
Liz?
For.
E. Malcolm?
For.
I. Martin?
For.
N. Maxwell?
For.
N. E. Maxwell?
For.
McKay?
For.
Matthew?
Milburn J.?
For.
Milburn B.
For.
Deacon?
Perry?
For.
Fordhouse?
For.
Travel?
For.
Punchen?
For.
Purvis?
For.
Roberts?
For.
Robertson?
For.
Sue?
A. Smith?
For.
M. Smith?
For.
Stevenson?
For.
Struck?
Taylor?
For.
Thompson?
For.
Traynor?
For.
A. Walsh?
For.
M. Walsh?
For.
Walsh?
For.
And Ross?
For.
As unanimous, motion is agreed. The next business is to consider a report for the corporate director business and resources on the Treasury Management Midyear Report by the 30th of September 2019. I will ask councillor Ed Morgan to form the report. Councillor Morgan?
Well, thank you, Mr May. The Chartered Institute of Public Finance and the company's core practice on treasury management requires council to receive a mid-year report on treasury management. The report covers the period from the 1st of April 2019 to the 30th of September 2019. The UK convee, convee's growth has been slow in the first half of the year mainly due to the Brexit uncertainty. It is expected that growth remains subdued over the next couple of years. The consumer price index inflation was 1.7% in September 2019 with an expectation slightly to remain close to the Bank of England's 2% target for the next two years. The Bank of England's base rate remains at 0.75%. The council had cash investments of 70.6 million pounds at the PBD end. Further, 153.8 million was invested on behalf of the pension fund. The credit limits for the organizations that the council lends to are set in consultation with linked asset management. During the period, no new counterparties have been added to the lending list. In the first half of the year, 11 new public works loan board loans were arranged, totaling 54 million pounds. This was due to PWL being raised dropping to historically low rates, meaning it was financially worthwhile to take the borrowing segment over the year, much earlier than planned. Other short-term loans were arranged to assist in class cash flow management. Also 20 million pounds of PWLP debt matured and was repaid. As of the 30th of September 2019, the external borrowing for the general fund was 377.7 million pounds against a forecast financing requirement of 388.3 million pounds. For the housing revenue account, the external borrowing was 290.2 million pounds against a forecast requirement of 287.5 million pounds. The general fund, the financing of 10.6 billion pounds is covered temporarily from the council's cash balances. The housing revenue account is currently overfunded, but will move to a neutral position by the year end. Each year, the council is required to set a range of treasury and potential indicators that provides a framework from which within the treasury management functions is delivered. The treasury activity was controlled within the indicators during the period. In addition, all investments in borrowing has been conducted in accordance with the treasury management strategy that was approved by the council in February 2019. Council is recommended to note the report. I move the report, Mr May.
Is that seconded? Seconded. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report?
Thank you, Mr May. So towards the end of the report, it says that there are no environmental or sustainability implications, but I'm not entirely convinced about that. I gather that the tiny rear pension fund currently holds some investments in the fossil fuel sector. And I appreciate that local authorities have a responsibility to ensure that their pension funds deliver the best possible return for their employees, but according to Unison's Guide to Local Government Pensions, and I quote, "In recent years, pension funds divested from fossil fuels have financially outperformed those that remain invested in fossil fuels." In recent years, we've also been warned about fossil fuel investments from various sources, and again, I quote this star fourling, "A substantial proportion of these assets are going to be worthless." These aren't my words. They aren't the words of Extinction Rebellion. They're not the words of Greta Thunberg. They're the words of that other well-known environmental campaigner, campaigner and eco-warrior, Mark Khan, the former governor of the Bank of England. Bear all this in mind, it's time for us to consider living up to our climate change commitments. Think very carefully about the precarious future value of these investments and stop investing in fossil fuels.
Yes, thanks, Mr May. Mr May, I thought that the consequences might have congratulated us on our sound financial management over the past quarter. You know, I know that he has a drum to beat and he beats it every year, every, every council meeting, and I know it is important, but you know, I thought he might be a bit gracious and thanked us for our well financial management. But anyway, Mr May, climate change is recognized as a, as a, as a significant financial risk, but this doesn't mean that we should divest from all fossil fuel companies for other, for other companies with high carbon emissions. The approach that the pension fund adopts on climate change is one of active engagement with companies to affect change and improvement in environmental practices and believe that this is the most appropriate way to manage those risks. This is implemented through ongoing dialogue with companies and by holding annual meetings on issues that result in changes in a company's behaviour and approach. The engagement takes place through the investment managers and through organizations such as the local authority pension forum. While engaging with companies, the funds investment managers are required to assess these climate risks when buying, selling and holding investments. The council as an administrative authority for pension fund is bound by a fiduciary duty to act in the interest of the pension fund members and skilled employers. It cannot take investment decisions based purely on ethical or environmental views. It must take account of the financial aspects of any decision and invest for the return. If the council were to divest from these companies for non-financial reasons, it would be well, it would be breaching its fiduciary duty. We are currently looking at a couple of investment products which will allow the council to fulfill its duties and at the same time reduce its exposure to, to risk.
Thank you, Mr Chair, Mr May.
Have you, is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Motion's agreed. The next business is to receive questions under procedure related. Two questions have been received under the show. The first question is from Mrs Silverstone House and reads as follows. Other than the 365 plan in brackets, which some businesses have actually had a negative impact. What steps is the council taking? And she said, what steps is the council taking for truck and meeting businesses, for the King Street and Morket Place areas of South Shields? Mrs Stonehouse will receive a written response to a question within seven days of this meeting. Second question received from Mr Peter Brisslow, which means, what steps are being taken by South Tyneside Council to ensure that we put amidst the national target to recycle half all household waste by 2020? And do the council also have a target for waste reduction along with recycling targets? Mr Brisslow will receive a written response to his question within seven days of this meeting. To fully include, two pages. The next business is to deal with petitions under council procedure related. Four petitions have been received. Four petitions have been received under the rule. I will explain the procedure to follow for the petitions. We will not debate the petitions today. After the petitions have been presented in accordance with the constitution, I will move that they be referred to the probate body. Position one. Park and Berman, Anderson Street and Brennan Walk, £20 per year. The petition has 12 signatures. Position two. Plaque to be signed on Temple Park Memorial Park to complete the existing dedication plaque to mark and recognise the park as a war memorial. It is already registered as a war memorial by the North East Memorial Project and has a reference number of Sierra 86 dot 167 dot... "The word from the 1944 Council minutes where the land was offered to accept by the Borough Council should be used as follows." "Temple Park War Memorial, then we should gift it to people of South Shields by the last committee in number 1944 under the strict convention to maintain as an open space of 175 vehicles for the use of public and virtue." "Possession of the park is a tribute by the commissioners to the park which the citizens of South Shields played during the war in their service of the country and all spirit of goodwill the word South Shields which it exemplifies." This petition has 20 signatures. Position three. That South Tyneside Council review the Winter Wonderland Parade with a view to combining a Christmas tree light switch on and the WW parade into one event. Fully including the community in which it serves and showcases our talent. Making the event animal free, significantly reducing the cost to taxpayers and making the event suitable for 82 signatures. Position four. Request for urgent review of local bus services in South Shields, which the opening of a new transport interchange... Interchange in South Shields, there have been several changes to bus stops and routes. These changes have been made to challenge, challenging for local people to travel from their homes to the town centre and back. People in the Low Top area have been significantly affected as access to the churches, pokes and the radar fort, the changes have also had serious impact on the Morgan area businesses and buses no longer stop at the Morgan. This petition has 1,733 signatures. In accordance to standing orders and reports that the petitions stand referred to the probate officers for further consideration. Is that seconded? Is that agreed? The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. The five motions have been considered under the rule. I will explain the procedure for motions. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion and he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded and the secondant may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to be debated by members who may speak for up to three minutes and may move the amendments. Motion one has been submitted by councillor Thompson, Francis, Robertson, Roberts and Pay Milburn. Councillor Thompson, please present the motion.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, before councillor Thompson moves his motion. But it is asked the opposition, bearing in mind that both motions whilst technically are able to be considered today, they are constitutional amendments to the constitution and we normally consider those at the annual council meeting. Therefore, can I ask the opposition whether or not they would be prepared to remit motion one and motion two to the Constitutional Committee for review with legal officers to ensure their full consideration and that the matter be referred to the annual council meeting?
Councillor Thompson and Francis, doing what's said, the point of order that has been made.
Mr Mayor, how would this be referred in the Constitutional Committee? Based on precedent, we've recently had constitutional motions which have been moved in a certain annual council.
Sorry, I don't know what the council's referring to.
We've recently, I recently asked for a constitution motion to be referred to a constitution committee and that was denied.
Again, I have no idea what the council's referring to, but I am asking that the opposition consider remitting motion one and two to the Constitutional Committee so that we can consider these two motions in depth with legal officers.
Do you agree?
I'd like to add that the motion is referred to the Constitutional Committee, so yes.
So you wish to proceed with the motion on this, is that right? Do you say, councillor Thompson?
I agree, yeah.
Point of order. How come this wasn't picked up by the mountain officer or anybody else before it got yet today?
Motion one, we have to be considered if you agree, yeah?
I'll go ahead.
Or go ahead with the motion. Right, we'll go ahead with the motion then?
Mr Mayor, transparency, openness and accountability are crucial in order to maintain public faith in elected representatives, not a more so than this time. With this in mind, there are calls that any council, including full council, a request by any single present councillor for a recorded vote will be allowed. Currently, our constitution requires a minimum of six councillors to be present office. This is completely disproportionate to the current rate of this council and completely unfair to the people of South Tyneside. This does not allow residents to have the liberty to elect their representatives to vote. We have many important motive decisions to make in the council. Our council promotes itself as being transparent and fair. How can this be the case if we are not able to clearly identify who is for or against our council? At present, we have six opposition elected members of the council. For various reasons, there is the potential for one or more of these councillors to not be present. Surely, this is black circle and an amendment, as this motion requests, is normally practical and has mentioned the support of fairness and transparency.
Is the motion seconded?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'd like to second this motion. Before I begin, I want to point out that this isn't a party political issue at all. It's an issue about doing what's right for the people of South Tyneside and doing what's right in terms of local democracy. Just to refer back to the leader's comments, I believe that what was being alluded to was the fact that in the November meeting, there were changes to the constitution there that despite what had been agreed by the Constitutional Committee, something else actually was implemented. I'm sure all councillors are familiar with the Norman principles of public life. Two of the seven principles are openness and accountability. To those members who might be considering voting this down, this motion down, or referring it back to the Constitutional Committee, I would say this: Think carefully about how this looks to the people of the borough and think carefully about how this looks to the voters in your halls. Some people might draw the conclusion that a vote against this motion is a vote against openness and accountability, a vote against transparency. Many people want to have the full confidence that the councillors elected to serve them are willing to stand up and be counted, to be prepared that the people of South Tyneside know exactly how they voted on the important issues discussed in this chamber. Those who might call for this to be referred back to the Constitutional Committee perhaps have short memories. It's only a few weeks since constitutional amendments agreed by our committee were overturned, a decision taken behind the closed doors, but the justification of the committee is merely advised. In the interest of openness and accountability, people could be forgiven if the amendment just isn't good enough. People don't want their elected representatives to hide behind the rules of the constitution. People don't want to be kept in the dark. All they want is decisions to be made in a transparent way, living up to the ideals of openness and accountability so clearly identified in the Norman principles. All we are asking is for the people of South Tyneside to know how their elected representatives vote in the spirit of the Norman principles. It's about openness. It's about accountability. Please do the right thing for local democracy and vote for this motion.
The members who are in the house wish to ask questions or speak or move on.
Yeah, I didn't actually have any intention of speaking about this morning, but I don't actually have nothing with people on Howard Walk, I'm back, I don't know who put on Howard Walk, on everything, I've got my tour cards on everything. Sorry, sorry, Mr Mayor, sorry. As I said, I wasn't prepared to speak on this intended. I personally have no issue with a named vote on everything in the motion. I'm more than happy for people to see Howard Walk on everything. I've sat here, our nearest stations have not voted. We don't have extensions, we all go out and go things and that sort of. I work for a council where anybody who wants to remain named vote, there's a named vote. I've worked for numerous councils and anybody who's been called for a named vote has been named vote. I don't understand why anybody would have a problem with it. I can kind of understand why we want to refer to Constitutional Committee, but if you go to a constitutional committee, what I would want to say is that whatever comes back from Constitutional Committee, whatever their recommendations are, comes back here for the final decision, not for Constitutional Committee to make a decision and then council assembly on. I just think I don't have an issue with it, one has Constitutional Committee, that's fine, but I just think it has to be the final decision comes back, it will be made. And maybe the leader of the council was intending that, but it wasn't made clear. I'm sorry, I'm kind of asking that question. If it was Constitutional Committee, we look for consideration, but those recommendations then come back here for us to have that final decision by the board.
Councillor Thompson, do you wish to reply to this bit? Is the motion agreed? Do you have a vote? Do you have a name board?
Do you have a name board? Sure, I'm... Anybody can put a question, they can vote.
Yes, you can, if you've got a little five, four, five, four. Put your hands up.
Stand.
Stand, yes, we'll stand.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Do not proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Ask people if each member could indicate whether they are for or against the motion or not. Angela? Agnew? Agnew? Arkinson? Ellen? Boyer? Brady? Arthur? Dean? Dick? Dix?
Against.
Dixon? Donaldson? Toby? Allison? Flip? Coleman? Francis? Four. Gibson? Hutton?
I couldn't look at the citizens, I had a vote against.
Aye? Hetherton? Foxon? Keir? Ke? Kewa? Sorry, this... E. Martin?
Against.
I. Martin? N. Maxwell? Against. McKay?
Against.
McHugh? J. Milburn? Four. P. Milburn? Four. Deakoff? Perry? Against. Porthouse?
Yes.
Prabhat? Punchin? Against, against three.
Is it against or for? Is it against or for?
Four. Again? Burvis?
Against.
Roberts?
Four. I'm just getting the residents to know which ones are fully against it. The election's coming up for them.
Can I ask President Pilton how I've got a vote? Are you for or against?
Do you have a vote? Do you have a vote?
Do you have a call?
Do you have a vote? Do you have a vote? Hampshire, are you for or against?
I'll go for.
A Smith? Against. Anderson? Stevenson? Strack? Taylor? Thompson?
Four.
Traynor? A Wash? And Wash? Welsh? And West?
Against.
Yeah. We have a result of got eight for and thirty-five against. The motion is against. We might not have been sure what they voted for. Motion two? Just one, one extension. The motion two has been submitted by councillors Francis, Thompson, Roberts and Milburn. Councillor Francis, will you present the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Like the previous motion, this is a simple amendment intended to strengthen local democracy. Opposition is an essential part of the political process on every level. The ability to debate and hear and see different viewpoints is crucial for good decision-making. The recent history of this council's makeup essentially made forward challenges for opposition members of a motion related and a member of the Labour Group. In a diverse area with residents holding a wide range of opinions, the requirement for five councillors' support to get a motion heard just doesn't seem right. There are already checks and balances in place. We already know that if a motion is not agreed by a majority of elected members, it will not be passed anyway. This motion is just a case of ensuring that a wider variety of opinions can be heard in this chamber. It's a simple question of free speech. Even then, there are safeguards in place and of course, the mayor has the right to remove motions out of order. Checks and balances already exist. A recent amendment to the Constitution, the need for physical signatures on motions, creates even more unnecessary obstacles if five signatures are needed. This affects opposition members' disproportion. As I mentioned earlier, some may feel that this motion should be referred back to the Constitutional Committee. Some residents might see this as another example of key decisions being made in a less open manner, in a smaller meeting that isn't filled, made available to the public. And as we've learned, it's only advisory and judicial state can then be completely overturned in decisions taken beyond closed doors. Needing five councillors to get a motion heard simply isn't necessary. Let's look at what works elsewhere. In Labour councils with many more councillors than we are here, only two members need to support a motion for it to be heard. Sunderland just need a proposer and second. Dogwood, proposer and second. We passed, just a proposer and second. In Islington, only a proposer is needed to get a motion debated. In many other places, just a proposer is needed to get a motion on the agenda and a second is called for in the meeting itself. Just a few minutes online will show you how this council currently puts up formal barriers to truly open debate headquarters. Darlington, just a proposer and second. Suffolk County Council, East Suffolk District Council, just a proposer and second. Mid Sussex District Council, Burgess Hill Town Council, proposer and second. Burnley Council, just a proposer, second, called for in the meeting. Same in Richmondshire District Council, Lewis District Council, Kirklees Council, proposer and second. Bradford Council, proposer and second. Bristol Council, proposal and second. Wirral, York, Charmwood, the list goes on and on and on. All just need a proposer and second. Why then are we insisting on five? Please vote for this motion and allow this council, and more importantly, the people of this borough, the same level of open, free political debate enjoyed up and down the country.
Mr Mayor, fully support councillor Frances's motion. As I mentioned during motion one today, we as the councils should be seen to be fair and responsive to every elected representative in our council. How can this be the case with a disproportionate requirement for submitting a motion? Effectively, we are saying in simple terms that for the current mayor of our council, if more than one opposition councillor cannot be for any reason, cannot for any reason support a motion, then no opposition motions can be submitted. Is this fair? Is this reasonable? Is this what any of us in this council want? Surely not. I second this motion.
The motion is over, we have been given by members to whether they can now wish to speak or ask questions on the matter. The councillor Frances, she's not going to be quiet, huh?
She can't be quiet.
Is the motion agreed? Well?
We haven't voted.
Want a named vote? Do you want to stand up? Want a named vote?
Thank you, at the end of number three, we'll give a vote for against the motion, I call it. Almar? Atkinson? Bell? Boyer? Brady? Carter? Dean? Dick? Dix? Dixon? Donaldson? Duncan? Allison? Flynn? Foreman? Francis? Gibson? Howton? Haye? Hefton? Hobson? Keegan? Kerr? Kewa? Liz? E. Martin? I. Martin? N. Maxwell? McKay? McHugh? Dear Milburn? Dean Milburn? P. Fox? Perry? Porthouse? Prabhu? Punchin? Murphy? Roberts?
Four, it's on the front, maybe anybody in here?
Robertson? Four. Sewell? E. Smith?
Against.
Anderson? Stevenson? Teale? Thompson? Trainer? E. Walsh? N. Walsh? Welsh? And West? Against.
We've got six for, thirty-seven against, for more than six. Have you agreed?
Have you agreed?
Motion three. I'm teaming so with it by councillor Frances, Thompson, Donaldson, Dean Milburn, and Roberts. Councilor Frances, please give us a motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm getting sick of the sound of my own voice tonight. This motion was submitted in response to a number of requests from local residents and it was based on a model motion created by the RSPCA. Couple of weeks after this motion was submitted, a very similar one was tabled. Rather than amend the existing motion, that's been tabled as a separate motion, motion five, I believe, into tonight's agenda. I feel that the subsequent motion is fully in line with the intent of the original motion and strengthens it by ensuring that if passed, the council will have the power to fully enforce it. Motion five also contains a commitment to write to the UK government urging them to introduce legislation that will reduce the negative impact fireworks can have on animals and vulnerable people. This motion is a vote of party politics. I'm not worried whose name the motion's in or who gets the credit, all I want is for the right thing to happen for the people of South Tyneside and indeed the country. With this in mind, I'm happy to go with the text of motion five in place of this motion and I'm therefore minded to request this meeting's permission to withdraw this motion and instead would encourage all members to vote the motion right.
To see the motion five. We're not considering our motion five, it results in fireworks, the motion has been submitted, we're not going to attack.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And as councillor Frances said, a number of, I was one of many members' colleagues across the chamber, to receive emails from residents who via the RSPCA website, this issue was highlighted, the effect of fireworks on animals. And actually, what we need to acknowledge as well is the distress caused by those people with a raging health conditions. And now the noises obviously on animals as well. So I'm really pleased that councillor Frances acknowledges that that actually strengthened the motion. In terms of what we can do whilst it would be, you know, very, what can we say, pleasing to be able to require all public fireworks displays to give notice of them. Unfortunately, the council is not in force, there are no powers that the council has to do so. We can request however, and that's what we have said in this motion. We also, as councillor Frances said, said that we need to write to government. Because the current decibel limit is set at one hundred and twenty decibels for consumer fireworks. And that is set based on the effect it has on people rather than animals. So in the motion that I proposed today is that ninety decibels be set, which should be much more, I don't know. I don't have a pet at the moment, but would hopefully be, you know, more approachable for people with pets. So therefore, I'd like to propose that the motion, motion with regards to reducing the impact of fireworks is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll be very quick in seconding this motion because I think everybody in the chamber should agree. I just wanted to say that nobody wants to stop the pleasure of enjoying the fireworks. But it is becoming an increasing problem with the noise and antisocial behaviour, especially around the fifth of November time. Also, I would just like to point out that some fireworks are imported and are not up to UK standards. So people when they're buying the fireworks should be careful where they purchase them from. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Motion is now to be debated by members to whether they can ask questions or speak of the amendment. No, so is the motion agreed? Motion four. Atkinson's bid by councillor Robinson, Dean Milburn, Robert, Thompson, Frances, and Hamilton. Councillor Robinson, can you please present the motion? This motion is for the return of palliative care to St Clair's hospitals buildings in Genoa. What's happened since putting the motion in, the council, or the Labour council has put in an amended motion, which for the public is changing the wording on the original one that we've put on. After I've spoke, the council will stand up and talk about their motion and I'll get a reply to that. But I'll speak about mine first and I'll come back on the council when they've spoken. So first of all, thank the councillors that signed the motion because otherwise I wouldn't be able to do it. To the point where we even get a named vote at the end of it. So I'm very grateful for that. And after thirty months of silence since St Clair's closed, we've now got discussion in the council chamber where literally no Labour councillors, one or two maybe, have spoke about St Clair's but there's been no backing, despite the devastating sudden closure and no questions asked. So thanks to the backing of the other councillors. The recent petition that was handed in to the CCG, three thousand signatures, it only had one objective, the whole campaign, we've got one objective. And that objective is to get palliative care back into primumos terrace. It's not to have palliative care provided in the footprint of the hospital, in the bedded space in the hospital, in the bedroom of the hospital, anything else. It's to put it in the tranquil surroundings that it was in, where the people are not surrounded by busy traffic. They can have the doors open, the fridge doors open in their beds, et cetera, et cetera. We don't want palliative care in the footprint of a hospital. We wanted to pack it St Clair's as one objective. And tonight, if I put my hand up to the council's amended motion, it will be only on condition that we're talking about primumos terrace. Because the words get twisted to the point where they'll say, the independent councillors voted in favour of it, but it's going to get in the bedded space in South Shields, their hospital. It's all about returning to primumo's health. So the palliative care since St Clair's closed thirty months ago suddenly has been provided in a mixture of places from Ward Two or Ward Twenty South Shields Hospital and has been shared with the dementia patients, et cetera. God love them people, they deserve to have an area for themselves with a dementia care, et cetera, or mental health care. Palliative care put in the same area is an absolute disgrace. You've got families who have genuinely spoken out and said that they've had to talk to their loved ones in their dying hours and dying minutes, behind the curtain or dementia patients have pulled the curtain across and they're trying to get a new understanding. The mixed board is an absolute disgrace for palliative care and that's what we've had. Separate to that, this week I've been told about a person that was given the horrible news that they need the palliative care and they were offered to go to Rye. The answer to that was, I'm going home now. At home or to be in Rye, your family can't get to Rye. So the choice we've had for the last thirty months is all the way off. Again, there's been no proper support from this Labour council, there's certainly no leadership off them or there. Not a bit of leadership. Yeah, couple of councillors, in a high respect, what John McKee's student said at the council service, what Will Flynn said on Facebook, he said he'd back, he'd come back to primumos terrace. Yeah? If I miss anyone, I apologise, but the Labour councillors that said it, I admit I didn't foresee it because this should bring them all together, it shouldn't be about that side, this side. It should bring them all together because it's not a emotive subject like this that we're ever going to discuss in this chamber. Even the downgrade to the hospital, that's bad enough. But for God's sake, palliative care to anyone, family or friends or anything, they should have the tranquil surroundings and the privacy and the dignity. We've got to give them that, everyone has got to give them that. So we're at the point now where it looks as though the CCG is ready to drop the bombshell in the next couple of weeks. And the vibes are, as I said in February before the consultation started, they've done six, nine months of consultation and the result is going to be what I said in February. You're getting a bedded space or a section of a footprint in South Shields Hospital. And there's a good chance it'll be in Haven Court. And Haven Court has recently just received a really, really atrocious report of the CQC. You know, I could stand here and quote ten unbelievable points at the pick-up on that inspection. The only one I'll quote is, the building is not safe. Yeah, now that can have been our hospital. If the CQC's found that recently, what's Matt Brown and the CCG going to talk with? Oh, well, it won't be like that. But can it have it a knack in its surroundings? Again, you talk about tranquil surroundings, in the South Shields Hospital, in the footprint, if it goes in Haven Court, you may as well put it in the middle of the avenue roundabout. It's got busy traffic all day, all the way around, there's only one safe quiet. And more than likely, it would be in the third floor where, as I said about St Clair's, they've got the patio doors to their rooms, they've got the individual rooms, it's got everything, it's standing there empty. And if this council wants to back from our palliative care, that it could be talking to the LHS, sorting out an agreement to get the building for a nominal figure, then work with the CCG to talk about that eight hundred thousand and add to it. I know the council's got the money supposedly and I know they're the Tory government. Well, this council can get a whole million when it suits them. The perfect example is Ian Malcolm's 365 development. Hundred million, a hundred million that can tap into. For a bus station, nobody wants to go, because there's no shops near it, they're all closed. They can get the money when they need to. There's other hospices that's willing to talk to it, to sit around the table, to partner up with. I know we can't just start a hospital, I'm a scavenger, I don't know about palliative care. But I've got plenty of people talking to us, saying that they would get involved, et cetera, et cetera. And there's definitely other hospices that are willing to form a partnership, so we're having a reinvent of the wheel. They would pool resources and they would bring their expertise and they would turn St Clair's, pack the world of wars, but also income generating. The talks have all took place, but I've been hung on, but that into the back of the, the lads. The Labour council hasn't done anything, I hope to God that please going to do something now, please. Councillor Robinson? So as I said, in a minute you'll hear the council's amendment to my motion, the House of Commons. House of Commons made a great deal, but I've got to emphasise here on camera for everyone just to understand, there's one objective and that is to return to St Clair's. The council's amendment cleverly used the words, and what I'm saying is, we do want palliative care in South Tyneside, but that means everyone to get a footprint, that means everyone to get a bedded space. We want our families, when they all want to visit someone, those in that end days, weeks, hours, if you want to try to find a busy car park space, St Clair's has the privacy for the parents, to go and see your loved one, who in there upset, come and have a upset. Yeah? So please, please, all this Labour council, for everything it says, and let's stay just palliative care. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm impressed, so yeah. Councillor Robinson, you've got a statement. I want to take that one. Yes. Yeah. This has been motioned in several St Clair's hospitals in the last year, too much factual, too much opinion. It's appealing some of the idea that, that the lead by South Tyneside council needs palliative care in Primmrose Hill site is nonsense. However, we are where we are, the reasons just help me, but we do recognise the hospice's provision within South Tyneside. I'm afraid I disagree with the view that the council should be informed from seeking an appropriate solution to restore the service, to restore the service to Primmrose Hill. The CCG simply intends in knowing expectations of the public by suggesting the service is better suited to a hospital site, sharing doctors, et cetera, to quote Matt Brown. There's not a hospice in four matters, fix that description, and there are many successful charitable home hospices in the same area. So I don't want to say that this is the case, so but I mean, the CCG, the CCG take the record to this channel, keep the record in this channel, and I just want them to leave it, give it to them, they're here on this issue.
The motion is now overturned, the view that the bill is by amendment, however, I have noticed of one amendment from councillor Anthony Dixon. The amendment has been served with an in writing, and I would ask councillor Dixon to present the amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr May. Firstly, I can see I'm talking to standards and appreciate the reasoning behind the motion, Mr May, but I'd like to move the following amendment, which is actually tabled with members this evening, but I will be down the amendment for the Galway. This council notes the hospice UK report commissioning statutory funding arrangements for palliative care providers in England, which found that the majority of hospices has had their statutory funding frozen or reduced year on year, that the crisis in statutory funding are having a negative impact on hospice services provisions, and that the commissioning hospice care acts a coherent funding model and is not based on local population need. This council further recognises the failure of central government to provide adequate statutory funding based on coherent need-based funding model, which has had a devastating impact to the provision of the end-of-life care in South Tyneside, cumulating in the closure of the well-respected and much-needed St Clair's hospice. This has led to the unacceptable position of South Tyneside being left with no hospice provision and residents at the end of their lives being required to choose between end-of-life care home, in the community, in hospital, or have to travel outside of the borough to receive the care that they desperately need. The council notes that in the years prior to the closure of St Clair's hospice, four per cent of deaths took place in a hospice setting. Mr May, the South Tyneside council resolves to one, instruct the council's chief executive to write to South Tyneside Clinical Commission Group, CCG, as a matter of urgency, to request that palliative care be maintained and improved in the borough, and that serious consideration should be given to this in line with the petition recently submitted to the CCG by the sign by local residents, which expressed their view that the Primmrose Hill site should be maintained. Two, request the overview and scrutiny committee to continue to examine this issue and to meet with the CCG and other healthcare professionals to ensure that palliative care provision continues to be provided and improved in the borough. Three, write to the Secretary of State for Health to demand that statutory funding is provided so that palliative care becomes a statutory function of the NHS, with funding based on local needs, and to request that consideration be given to urgent funding to support the restoration of palliative care in South Tyneside. Four, instruct the council's chief executive to write to the charities commission to demand that they investigate the former management of St Clair's Hospice Trust and to examine the speed of the closure of the palliative care unit in the borough to determine whether any formal action should be taken against the former management and trustees of St Clair's Hospice. Five, that the borough's MP's be requested to meet the Secretary of State for Health to discuss this matter with the view to securing additional funding to maintain palliative care provision in the borough and to support or demand that palliative care becomes a statutory function of the NHS. Mr May, that this amendment be subject to a near vote.
Do you mind a second, Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr May. I second the amended motion. The spirit of the original motion is a good one, however, as unbelievable as far away as. The amendment recognises the difference between end-of-life and palliative care supported. I fully support further communication instructions and request to press for answers, but importantly, to demand statutory funding states moving forward in order that we never ever see the demise of hospices again. Our community may not be aware that the overview and scrutiny committee, of which I am member, has written already a letter around the CCG on two occasions. To the charities commission seeking an investigation into the conduct and practices of the trust, noting that this failure was, I thought, believed to be due to incompetence of best and possibly fraudulent. The committee wrote to the Health Secretary, this is in line with the amended motion, pressing for a review of end-of-life palliative care funding. We made clear to the CCG not to, I thought, rule out any possible occasions that we took further away from the immediate vicinity of South Tyneside district office site. What we didn't do, Mr May, was to use the closure of St Clair's hospice, which was as a result of insolvency of an independent charity to further traumatised or bereaved the toxic drug community. Members were informed by email on twenty first of January of two thousand and nineteen of the collapse. Instead, we resolved to do everything that we could in an appropriate manner, allowing the full investigation of the charity by the dateless to take place swiftly and unhindered by expulsion. In retrospect, I want to say that we communicated that to our community effectively. The protest began on the twenty seventh of March two thousand and nineteen. We felt strongly that this was no political issue or an election campmanship. You are aware, Mr May, that my mum passed away in December two thousand and eighteen, generally claustrophobic, but prior to the charity committee's solace. My mum was most at home, as her express request by some of the deputy St Clair staff who were working in the community at the time. I was to look upon in hospital board, on hospital ward, and my dad in an ambulance. So I'm keeping aware as to the importance of being the best place and best care for all of us. In order to make clear to the CCG and health providers, I have colleagues attended all public science sessions, health watch meetings, and any of the events where I would learn more, to make an informed decision to make demands that are in this motion. I took the word bedded space from a health professional. I've been millimetreed for this by so, starting two of the sentences to the original motion. Bedded space simply means impatient beds, and I would personally say that it was spoken nature. I'm afraid the library and suburban community have been fully hogged by this implication of this nature or even worse, there are others that have been more grating to see. There continues to be a campaign of inciting hatred and harm by all selected members who failed to attend, even more such as the area, this hospital is the most component. Finally, Mr May, this amendment fundamentally sets out in rightly that serious consideration should be given to the whole at the Primmrose Hill site. This is absent from the original motion, but all of our community's rights. Mr May, I have privileged to second the amended motion.
The amendment is now overturned, can I speak by amendment?
Thank you, Mr May. But I would just like to give a short history of the rise. I just like to give a short history of the rise and fall of South Tyneside from the very beginning. In nineteen eighty seven, a group of people gathering, raising themselves, or anything else, came, got together to raise funds to buy a house in my village, to provide daycare for people suffering from cancer. There's a lot of lovely influential people amongst them, including Barbara Lady Chapman, Jim Hayden, ex police sergeant, sorry inspector, Jeff Dickinson, the man who drove in the van, Donald Bird and Cam, Harold Tagg, as a listener, and Sister Joanne Ching, who was a palliative care, and many, many dedicated volunteers as well. Charity shops were all in Park Avenue, was Tagg's, South Shields, and various fund within the management took place over a number of years to raise the funds, and they came to place with volunteers letting people run their homes to have their rest by day. In nineteen ninety one, the management committee realised that many of our patients were having to go to a hospital to spend their final days, but we sought to investigate the possibility of opening a better duty. We had tapping of South Tyneside council authority, this was before the days of the foundation trust. Bill dogs with the chair and the honourable members to the bill dogs to draft over Dave and Alison and myself. The architect, Dave Abash, who was Mark Barba's husband, agreed to draw plans and could fight aside. The health authority needed to rebuild the Primmrose Hospital, but we came to an agreement to deliver hospice and Natalie Care Hospital on the same site. Charity facilities included a lounge, changing facilities for staff, a laundry, a soup room, a chapel, an entrance that is including the central garden and the outside gardens. We also shared the costs when I was building. This was the first time a health authority and a charity were doing this. We carried on opening shops in Red Street, Horsey Hill, Charle, Kelly and Road, all run by dedicated volunteers. We raised money through trusts and events fraud, and we started a lottery, until we had the finance available to open a sixth benefit alongside Primmrose Hospital in nineteen ninety three. I was asked to serve the new hospital as commercial manager, responsible for raising seven hundred thousand per annum, managing the seven charity shops, the lottery, the tuition team, grants, drivers and volunteers, many homework in the hospice, helping with daycare, helping with rest by day, with reception duties and many other responsibilities at the lottery shops. I was responsible to the council trustees who carefully managed their accounts under cash flow, and I did this for six years. In these years, trouble arose because Primmrose Hospital closed, which meant that St Clair's was only using half of the building, but responsible for all the costs. An executive, chief executive was employed on a fancy salary with expenses. Shop volunteers, many who've been loyal to the charity for many, many years, were replaced by a paid staff. The lottery was flat last. The council of goodness obviously weren't in control of the accounts and the cash flow, and the charity was closed down by the charity commissioners. It clearly exists that St Clair's hospice no longer exists. The assets of their hospice have been stripped out, vans being taken, seat taken and the furniture away, right down to the arduous baths, which are rising for baths for the patients, everything has gone. There is a need for palliative care in South Tyneside, and this council has been talking to the foundation trust to find out how and where this could happen, but the Primmrose site unfortunately is too large and too expensive to run because we were only using half of it. And that's the biggest problem that we have. Unless we have the money to fund all of that site, we just wouldn't actually do it. We need to, for us to achieve this need for the population, there's poor and accessible to people South Tyneside, and the hospice, any of the other women. Our hospice provides daycare and many other things. We have palliative care nurses, who are out in the common community as well, my fellow nurses who were stationed in the hospice, went out, they came in the hospice, they talked to the daycare patients, they talked to people in our homes, we have people who are out and bringing people in the hospice for daycare, which is a daily site, and often that was the only person that they spoke to within weeks of being picked up. So, you know, there are many assets, many aspects to palliative care, which is not just for the energy, there are also other things, and we need to look for practices where we can empower all of the people, not just for the energy.
Thanks very much for that, that was a real good story in some respects, the unseated history of how St Clair's came about. I'm a realist. The reality, you summed up in your last few words, despite all the hard work that you went through in the late eighties and the nineties and doing what you did, with the volunteers that you had, people like Margaret Barba's husband on board, who's drawn the plans of the Primmrose Hill Hospital in the ten years. This is what's required now. Because it's why it's required, and I've said this then outside of St Clair's, is the reality is, the money is not there. Central government do not see it as a statutory requirement to provide money for this kind of care. And that's a disgrace, and I'm not going to be political, because no government and no party that I know of have it in the manifesto to put it as a statutory instrument. So without the money, where are we going to go? The council, far from sitting back, have already done some things in respect of the legality, so the man sitting here, who's chair of the Overkill Committee, the councillor Robinson, he's already been twice to the charities commission, twice to the Secretary of State, and in so far, the only response that we've had is from the charities commission saying that they are investigating it. Well, I'm sorry, Mr May, with the investigation is not going anywhere at the moment, and Chernobyl report was produced after six months, but one year down the line, we're still making for a report from the charities commission. It's a disgrace. We need to know what happened so that we don't, if we are going to go forward, and we all want to go forward, with a hospice in South Tyneside, we need to know what went wrong with that model. As trustees, the trustees have a legal responsibility, and they did not uphold that responsibility. I'm a trustee myself, for North of England, my mechanical engineers, but we're meeting tonight, after you've got a responsibility up there, I can't abdicate that responsibility, you cannot abdicate your responsibility to trustee, and I'm afraid that's what possibly happened there. We're going forward, and I've racked my brains about where we can get money. I'm prepared to sit down with anybody, and so are the councillors, prepared to sit down with anybody, to come forward with money, with the real money that's required to run such an establishment. They're talking with wages and wages charges, circa four million pounds, to run Primmrose Hill Hospital and St Clair's as now. The CCG have said they'll give eight hundred thousand pound, short for three point two million. So, you know, normally when I get up, I have something positive to say and say, all right, well, this has happened, this is what can happen, and this is what's going to happen. I'm afraid, I'm only one councillor among a lot of my colleagues in the community here tonight, and yes, there's talking discussions going forward, for example, General CFP, a meeting on Saturday with a working body of General CFP there, sorry, of St Clair's Hospital, are we doing something about it? There's yet, it always comes back, Mr May, to the money and the fact the central government do not fund it, council can't afford it, we need private input.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr May. I think councillor Ossie gave good sense of the history of St Clair's, and I'm exhausted of today there, in the beginning, working alongside Daisy Laura Chapman and Dr Alan Hill, who's...
whose inspiration is to have a unit where the people were dying on ordinary walls and people being upset and people witnessing that. Um, we were planning hard for many years, as councillor Austin pointed out, to raise funds to buy a house in West Dor village. But when Saint Clair's posted stores, and I think the public needs some facts here, when Saint Clair's posted stores, you know, it was running at two point two million pound a year it cost to run it. That money was raised through shops, but it was also raised through charity organizations and places. I recently read a report by the Hospice UK Committee, and they stated that eighty-two percent of hospices nationally are in financial difficulty. And I agree with my colleagues, we need to work collectively together to resolve this. But shouldn't be what councillor Kilgore referred to as bedded space or a bedded unit. We need to have the right people on site to look after those people. We need the oncologists, the specialist nurses and the consultants. Everybody sitting in this room in Kilgore Gallery, they're all being touched by somebody dying, whether it be a friend or a relative within their family, and or child brother and a father down with cancer. It's a terrible disease, you know, and those people should die with some dignity, with some help and support. So I agree, we should all work collectively together with the CCG, with the NHS Trust, but we shouldn't be pointing at this, they should be pointing at the council, saying it's council's responsibility to fund this. They should be pointing at the CCG or the NHS Trust. Collectively, we should be working together for the people of this borough to give them decent quality power of care. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
We will reply all of these for our mission.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to see what councillor Austin said, bringing a stop off in the store or nothing. So under start off for nothing, why do the costs of going to one site, which would have cost a hundred pounds, about thirty-five million? Why about four or five million? Because I'm sure the people wouldn't aim to get that back ourselves. Also, you said to stop or nothing, also seeing these people running here now can't stop now again. We're sorry, but we don't again, but we've got good people in this world, we've got, that will be fed and more than people. Also, when I told them, council gave, mentioned that the council thought money. I'm sure the council thought money somewhere because of that sacrifice at the night, and I see my neighbours, what people think they've done, they're not looking up. But what's the worst story we know is the ghetto again and getting again, where the volunteers are pleased, they're going for money, they said, we want this heart care badly. But when I talk about the council, not having money, it's strange, the council can find two hundred and eighty-six thousand pound for gathering orders for people that work for the council and running about the council. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, um, the idea I was going to speak on this, but I listened to some things I've heard, I've heard too. Sixty seventy, India, for where it is. First of course, the NHS has talked about looking after us from the creative period. Although that decade is a long, a successful movement, we've forgotten all about that. Whilst to some extent they may still look after us from the creative, by the ten year community degree, they tend to be a problem. They tend to think that you should pay for a fight, if torn by your family or by your friends or somebody else, should be taken responsibility for it. But not everybody has family or friends or somebody else who's been looking after them. Or, and some people choose not to, to be a member of a family and friends. And when you go towards the end of your life, you want to be able to choose where you die, when you're dying, everything. Everyone should have the right to do that, everyone. Local authorities aren't funded to provide the care legally, local authorities aren't allowed to direct a woman to provide the care. The commission provided care for individuals and their children, but legally they can't provide the care directly. But the government can and they should. I was shocked when I first checked out Saint Clair's frozen, that even NHS are only allowed to fund private care before consent of the hospital. And that is absolutely dreadful because we live in a society where everything is supposed to be free. Probably we need to come to see our care, and that is what we need to be looking at now. Make sure the government take that back on hold, stop prioritizing, stop outsourcing, and make sure that that to the briefest is considered as a support again. And private care isn't just a cancer, and all the people think end-of-life care, cancer. Although other things too, I have met, and all this, all this, and this can also do, it's something I agree maybe needs that end-of-life care. And we may not want to put them and die in hospital. And I don't know whether Saint Clair's site is, is viable or not, but what I do know is that many, many people choose to die, probably don't want to die in a hospital, who probably prefer to be dying some way that is a bit more like all, if it's not all. And that's why I think it's really important to support and motion the amendment, I support all of it. Um, I'm slightly concerned that the amendments taken out of the amendment portion, I've tried to identify the funding, um, but I'll have to do that in a form, a format, because I might be able to present it in my head and back. But I think it is time that we put this way above beyond any part of politics, this is about people, it's about dying and dying differently. And we all have to get behind the campaign to make sure that there is proper end-of-life care for everyone who needs it, where they need it, in the way that they need it, and that you not have to travel a forty miles to have that care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, as councillor Hamilton said, I, I was not planning to speak on this this evening. Um, but listening to the, to the debate of, I just want to say first of all, huge respect and gratitude to those who worked so hard for the setting up of the hospice in the first place and worked so hard to build it up to the success story that we heard outlined by councillor Austin there. And whatever the risk, whatever the opposite of huge respect and gratitude is to those that may have played a point, played a part this town for. Um, and I know it's an issue that's very close to the heart of people in this room and of course, many people in our communities. Um, slightly disappointed that the amendment removes the, uh, the, the notion of looking for alternative funding and also that removes the, uh, the state of support for the safe Saint Clair's hospice campaign, and that it also removes the, uh, the call to establish a cross-party working group to move forward on this together. Um, on the flip side, I think it's, it's very good that in the course of the amendment, um, we're calling for, uh, the chief, chief exec to write to the charities commission and demand the investigation of the former management of Saint Clair's hospice and, um, find out exactly what went on there. Um, I mean, regardless of blame or fault really, I think the one thing we can all agree on surely is that we need suitable provision for palliative care in the borough that gives people the dignity they deserve in their last days.
So again, just out, uh, what Davis just said, they were keeping that set Saint Clair's up and all the work that went on, before it moved to Primrose, and when it was at Primrose, it was unbelievable what they done. Uh, fantastic, so admiration for them. So again, we'll go back to the amendment, uh, and how the councils changed it. It is about getting the care back and that tranquil surrounding of that beautiful building. Well, we'll say about the cost of doing this, for to set anything up of this nature, the building would be the biggest thing, a total of three million, to set up the equivalent of what's standing there empty now. And I think it's only standing empty and it has been demolished because of the uhar that's going on. So I'm waiting for the noise to settle down, it'll be snowing, it'll be twenty houses on there. We can't allow that to happen, Saint Clair's ground is the equivalent to many people have a seventy-stroke memorial. You know, it can never have houses on that land, it would be unbelievably a sin, yeah? So the building's there, the funding, as I said before, it is hospice, it has to have a hospice sitting in this town hall next week, it's one of the paragons immediately. If they're not just coming in looking for money, they, they would bring in money because they do commercial activity alongside their hospice with respect, they can sell files, I know it costs two point two for a Saint Clair's in there, Saint QC, uh, CCG gave eight hundred thousand. So a near one point four million, or had, or Great North ones, or had everything else. You know, and let's not forget, the eighth of January, in the Shields Gazette, look at the new management team of Saint Clair's hospice, beautiful photo. Eleven days later, Saint Clair's hospice was closed, we never got a chance to do a public appeal, not one chance. And I've, you know, I've got no doubt a million at least would have come in. So again, the builders lying there and the, there's hospices one to work with, to bring back the way of stupidity. So there's a couple of three million building there, it could be settled within three months. And if this council was to announce a public appeal and the trust were there where the money was going, I think we'd have it open by July, that's the building. If this council has my problem, et cetera, a common talk, you know, I've come in this town hall today, I don't want you to shave your head for a paramedic, you know, what, what, what are you shaving your head for, me tell us, please? You're shaving your head, what you tell us, it's out of the audience, it's out of the house. So, what I'm saying, okay, what I've, I've summed up, what I'm saying is when I come in here at night, I come to this meeting at five o'clock, I can start to sign in book at the town hall, and the top man, the very top man for the CCG was in the building. Right, he's signing in to see Ian Malcolm, the man who's sitting there, you're literally a council, who's signing in, will he speak this camera and speak himself, please, on his personal thoughts as a leader of council about private care for the borough? Please Ian Malcolm, thank you.
The members, because we call the vote, do we have support of that at all?
Wait, did the chairman ask, ask you? Did the man ask you? Ian Malcolm is stand-up? It's not push, it's not push lads, it's young kid.
You'll be working all together, all in.
Sorry, I apologize for this, I apologize, mate.
All the members in this conference, from across the country, to record the vote, have we got the draft that was stand-up? So, the name board, thank you, you need to read the name board.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, for indicating whether they are for or against the amendment. Amal?
John?
Yeah, just, just for clarity, I'm inviting members to indicate whether they are for or against the amendment that was put forward by council this. Amal?
For.
I'm with Mr Tia Parkinson?
For.
Bella?
For.
Boyak?
For.
Brady?
For.
Carter? Dean? Dick?
For.
Dix?
For.
Dixon?
For.
Donaldson?
For.
Donham?
For.
Ellison?
For.
Flynn?
For.
Foreman?
For.
Francis?
Upstate.
Gibson?
For.
Hamilton?
For.
Hay?
For.
Edwina?
For.
Hobson?
For.
Here and here, to down?
For.
List?
For.
Eamonn?
For.
Aymon?
For.
And Maxo?
For.
McKay? McHugh? Not here. Jay Number?
For.
P Number?
For.
Amy?
For.
Portas?
For.
Prana?
For.
Punchin?
For.
Burris?
For.
Roberts?
Return to the public, Criminals Hill, for. So of course, Criminals Hill, I'm for.
I have need, uh, for or against the amendment.
Four for Criminals Hill, yeah.
If it's to return to Primrose Hill, for, that's, I'm not, by the way, I've got to say, on the camera, what I'm seeing is, I'm for if it's to return to Primrose Hill. I'm against if it's not Primrose Hill, on camera, thank you.
I've got the amendment in front of the council.
Yeah. Well, it's a twisted amendment, it doesn't say where the locations could be. I'm for Primrose Hill. If you put for Primrose Hill, please, John. It's on the camera anyway, so for, yes, John, thank you.
Ace?
For.
Shitting the hell out, telling the palliative care, sick, can you get him?
Stevenson?
For.
Tia?
For.
Thompson?
For.
Turner?
For.
Awas?
For.
Hemwos?
For.
Welsh?
For.
And West?
For.
When the amendment is carried by forty-two votes, and what I've seen is no such substantive motion. There are no further amendments, are there any further amendments? I'm not sure, but now, the amendment motion. Motion is granted, I agree. Is it not, please? Ray? For your response? Is your amendment motion agreed?
Agreed.
Management motion is agreed. That will keep the business of the case moving, standing in court for ever.